Good morning, everyone, and thank you for your patience. This, the July 6th, 2022, regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions, and we'll start with a new employee in public services.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Board. I'd like to introduce Brian Mullins. He started in June the 1st, and he's in our sanitation.
That's okay. You can do that.
He recently moved to Nags Head from Charlotte area. He spent 10 years working with the city of Charlotte as a heavy equipment technician. It's been a goal of Brian's to move to the beach for several years now, and it's official. Brian hopes to spend more time fishing and enjoying the other storms. Brian Mullins.
Thanks, Brian.
That's okay. Thank you very much, and we appreciate having you here. Thank you, and look forward to many years of service. I was remiss in not noting that that was our new public works director who came to make that introduction, and we very much appreciate you, Nancy, stepping up to that position, and are hearing good things, and we're very excited to have you continue your esteemed service with the town of Nags Head. Appreciate you. The next item is a new employee with the fire department, Chief Height. Deputy Chief Height, excuse me, I didn't mean to give you a promotion.
It's okay. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. How y'all this morning?
Get a little loose this morning.
That's okay. I'd like to take this time to introduce our new, one of our new firefighters, Noah Parsons. You may recognize Noah. He's been up here on several occasions for ocean rescue introductions. He also was a volunteer with us several years ago, but unfortunately, we lost him out to the Duck Fire Department, and then he moved on to South Carolina for about 18 months, but realized he wanted to come back home, so we were able to grab him, and we are certainly tickled to have him. Of course, as you know, he's got some roots as a firefighter, starting as a volunteer. He's from Dairy County. His parents run an electrical contracting business, and Noah, of course, I asked him, I said, "You know, what do you like to do in your off time?" And he says, "Anything to do with the water," hence being a lifeguard, boating, fishing, surfing, things like that. So once again, we're really happy to have him now, happy to have you back to the beach, and we're hoping that you have a really long career with us. Congratulations, Noah.
It's my understanding, I believe, that Will was not here this morning. Okay, thank you very much. So we have a new employee in planning and development, and Planning Director Kelly Wyatt. We'll introduce her.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm excited to introduce Kelly Brady to the board. This morning, she began work with the Planning Department on June 20th as the planner one, and she's jumped in feet first, which is amazing. She's already reviewing and issuing both residential and commercial permits. She's been going out on site visits daily, learning the town, and one of the best things is she's very familiar with munis. She's coming to us from Currituck County Planning and Zoning, where they use munis on a much higher level, so she's been able to help us learn some new tricks, and we're very excited to incorporate some of her knowledge into that as well. As I said, she's coming from Currituck County, where she was the permit officer two, and then promoted to development technician. We're thrilled she's come down the beach a little bit, and happy to have her on the team. A little bit of background about Kelly, she lives in Collington with her husband Terry. They have three children, Brendan, who's 27, and lives in Chesapeake. He and his wife are teachers, and they're expecting their first baby in late August, so Kelly is very excited about her upcoming grandbaby duties. Her daughter Rebecca's 24 and is a high school teacher in Currituck, and she has a 17-year-old son who goes to first flight. Kelly loves animals. She has three dogs, so we get entertaining stories about that daily. When she isn't working, she likes to ride motorcycles, be out on the boat, spend time with her family, and enjoys cooking, and cooking on the grill, and just being outside. So, as always, there's a food theme with planning. Welcome, Kelly Brady.
Thank you, Kelly. We're very excited about those munis skills. Good, very good. The next item on our agenda is a five-year recognition for sanitation superintendent Eddie Williams. Nancy?
Good morning. Again, this is Eddie Williams. He started in July 2017. He's a Hatteras Island native, and he and his wife Linda live in Buxton. Eddie was promoted to crew leader in about 2021, and now he's our sanitation superintendent. Eddie has a very strong work ethic. He's always the first to arrive and the last to leave. He speaks very highly of his crew and says he couldn't do his job without them, but Eddie's also one that jumps right in to help, and we're very lucky to have Eddie Williams.
Folks like Mr. Williams who helped keep the town looking good, and the town looks good this summer, so thank you very much for your service. Our next recognition is 10 years for Fire Lieutenant Evan Zadd.
Morning, once again, Mayor and Commissioners. Morning. If you would, please join me in recognizing Lieutenant Evan Zadd for 10 years of service to the now Town of Nags Head Fire Department. We apologize, this is a little bit overdue. His actual anniversary date was in December, and due to some scheduling conflicts, he wasn't able to attend. Evan's originally from Ohio, began his career here in 2011 after being offered the position of firefighter. I had the pleasure of working with Evan when he first came here, as he was assigned to me when I was a captain. Throughout his time in Nags Head, he has been a dedicated employee who is very detail-oriented. He believes in practicing the skills required daily to perform our task proficiently. He has risen through the ranks from firefighter to driver operator, and now serves in the position of lieutenant. Evan resides in Nags Head with his wife and two boys, Mason and Ben. Evan also operates his own construction business, which is an asset to our department, as his knowledge of building construction is extremely valuable. We're happy to have Evan as a lieutenant in the fire department, and on our hopeful that he intends to stay here for a very long time. Evan, congratulations.
The next item on our agenda is a 20-year recognition for permit specialist Kim Thompson. So Director Kelly Wyatt, Planning Director.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize Kim Thompson. As you said, she's the permitting specialist with the Planning Department for 20 years of service with the town of Nags Head. Kim didn't actually start out in planning. She started out at the front desk over in Town Hall, then moved over to the Finance Department as payroll specialist, and thankfully, now she's over in the Planning Department. Kim's truly the smiling face of the department. She's the first interaction that people have when they begin their permitting process, so whether it's walking in the front door, starting the conversation with Kim, or whether you're calling the front desk, she's always helpful and excited to guide people in the right direction. Kim is an invaluable employee, not only to the department, but obviously to the town as a whole. Some thoughts and comments that came to mind from her coworkers within the department are a testament to Kim's work ethic, her ability to create connections with every person that crosses her path, both internal and external, and her insistence to always go above and beyond when it comes to customer service. So just a few comments that I wanted to share. Kim is one of a kind. She's a beautiful person inside and out. She's so thoughtful and welcoming, and truly irreplaceable, and always on time. Kim is always willing to help. She's very thorough, and if there happens to be something she doesn't know the answer to, she'll figure it out quickly and get back to you in a timely manner. I appreciate her thoughtful nature. One employee described her in five words: punctual, dependable, helpful, pleasant, and foodie. So I'm beginning to think a requirement of our department is that you either like to make food, eat food, or both. Admittedly, Kim says she enjoys both. And lastly, a coworker described Kim by saying she has a perfect combination of traits. She's dependable, smart, honest, kind, and has a fantastic sense of humor. The Planning Department is lucky to have her every day, and the town has been lucky to have her for 20 years. While these are just a few comments from inside our organization, I feel confident that if you were to ask our customers, they would say very similar things, noting the extra effort that she always puts into making the permit process smooth and as seamless as possible. Kim's a pleasure to work with. She's passionate about her job and responsibilities. She treats everyone with respect and equality. She handles difficult situations with grace and shows both confidence and humility in all of her day-to-day activities. We're proud and honored to be able to acknowledge and celebrate Kim for her 20 years with the town, and truly hope she has no intention of going anywhere anytime soon. Thank you so much.
Those lights are bright. I'm ready to start talking. What do you want to know?
Before we go to public comment, I want to ask if the Board has any objection, and then if those representing the Visitors Bureau have any objection. We have you time-specific, but there's no reason not to move you up and let you go on about your day unless there's some objection from the Board. Okay. So I think what we'll do in that case is go right after the consent agenda, if you don't mind, and if we can get their presentation ready, then we'll do that right after the consent agenda. So that brings us to public comment. Mr. Leidy, I'm not even going to bother to ask you today, but is there anyone here for public comment? I don't see anybody. All right, very good. Then we will close public comment.
So far, so good.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I will tell you that our firm is architect for one project in here, but because it's only the consent agenda, I will vote on that, but next month, I will ask to be recused when that item comes before the Board. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. And with no objection, then, we will have our report from the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, and we welcome you to come on up to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Great to see you, and thanks for lending us the mayor pro temp as a representative on the Tourism Board this year. Cheers. Former chairman of the Tourism Bureau, Ms. Coon, good to see you, and Commissioner Brinkley and Sanders, appreciate it. I'm Tim Cafferty. I'm current chairman. I'm the 31st chairman of the Dairy County Tourism Bureau, and I think we were here when I was the 25th chairman. I feel it's important that we reach back out to our partners and our participants on the Visitors Bureau, and so what are we going to talk about? Well, how about the event site? That's the subject at hand here today, and appreciate the opportunity to share with you the soundside site, which we hope to one day call the Event Center Site. So we have a little brief presentation here. Of course, Lee Nettles is with me, the executive director. A lot of you know this information, so we'll speed through, but I think it's important that we know where we've been and where we're headed on this thing. And Commissioner Coon, I can't help but think, you may have been the chairman of the Board when we acquired this property back in the day, so you can tell us even more about where we came from and where we've been since that time. Are we in control here? Okay, great. So we're going to share the vision and remind you that this is not a design. This is a concept. We've gone through many stages here through this process, amongst those, the advisory committee that was formed. Mayor Cahoon, you've been serving on that, and it was one year ago Friday that your committee unanimously approved the vision of the Event Center, and so here we are a year later, and I want to tell you where we've been and where we headed. We've gone to various community groups, as well as some towns, to share our vision about what this site's going to look like down the road. We've gotten tremendous positive feedback. We also had a public hearing that Commissioner Brinkley attended, as well as Commissioner Sears, and we had, I think probably 25 takeaways from that meeting that we had. A lot of great feedback from our community, not unanimous support, but we weren't looking for that. We were looking for feedback, and so as we move forward, we want to make sure we have the vision of everyone here, including Chief Webster, who was there, and talked to us about the safety concerns, and that's something we've heard very loud and clear. I do not have a clicker to measure how we're doing that. The mouse just doing that? Okay. All right. So again, as we talked about the various groups we've been to, and you know the advisory committee I just referenced, Mayor Cahoon, and we had Webb Fuller on this group as well, Tanya Cohen for the Hotel Motel Association, Mike Diana from the restaurant world, if you will, and Ralph Buxton, who's known to a lot of us. And so we're trying to develop an economically viable entity, I don't know what to call it other than the building, that will promote the mission of the Visitors Bureau, and that is, as those of you know, when we enacted in 1991 by legislation by the state, we are to promote less than in-season travel and tourism, and so we hope that this is going to be something that you can see that the out-of-market visitation can increase by having something like this facility. We do not have an indoor facility, and this specific site looks to serve a market from 300-plus to approximately 2,500 people in the building. We do not currently have any site like that. We have various hotels and event sites that might have less than 300, but we want to make sure we're not competing, and we want to make sure we're drawing less than in-season travelers here. Lee will carry some of the specifics about what we're looking at, but clearly, there's no argument about the last three bullet points on this particular thing. We have certainly the ability to have events. We've had the seafood festival there for years, but as we all know, it's a risky entity in that you have tents or just relying on the weather to be good on whatever day you pick is not necessarily the greatest strategy in the world. We also believe there's a market for groups, if you will. I'm a member of the North Carolina Vacation Rental Managers Association. At this point, we can't have our events here on the Outer Banks. There's not a site big enough. We have to go to Wilmington, Raleigh, Asheville, et cetera. We'd love to have events here, because the majority of the population of that organization rests right here on the Outer Banks. The North Carolina Association of Realtors can't have their events here. There are various groups that have come forward and said they'd love to come here and have their events. Sports, spatable. We'll certainly talk about that with Lee, but I am the father of five. I can tell you, I lost count years ago about how many events and sites I've visited over the years with cheerleading, softball, volleyball, whatever the case might be. We were somewhere every weekend, including, I remember, Ocean City, Maryland in January for a weekend. Not a great experience, but at any rate, there's certainly a lot of opportunities, and one of the things that we're most excited about, we talked with the folks at COA as well, about the opportunity to partner into an educational environment here at the Event Center, where we could have possibly a training kitchen, for lack of a better term, that we would see activity there almost on a daily basis with people learning the trades of the restaurateurs here on the Outer Banks, and maybe a potential source of new employees. Here's the slide that nobody seems to like, but it's, I'm going to hit it head-on in terms of what the economic impact of this Event Center might be. Now, understand, this is coming from a consulting firm that we hired to work through these things. $25 million in new spending is a potential for this site, as well as the fact that there could be 14,000 new room nights. It will operate it as a deficit, yes, and we're talking about at least five years before we get to the point where we think it will even come close to breaking even, but it will generate more than $1 million in new tax revenue. There's no question through meals, occupancy, and sales tax. And then the full-time equivalents, you see 191 new jobs. That's the headliner that everybody's eyes draw to, and you think, wait a minute, that's almost 400,000 hours when you look at all that, and that does include things like police, fire, people who will serve the event in some way that occurs there. These are numbers that came from the consulting firm, believe it or not, but we'd be remiss not to share that with you. I also want to make sure you're aware what's going on there now. There's activity there now. We are in the midst of a construction project with the boardwalk. Of course, you know there are some existing boardwalks there, but we are looking to expand the use of the facility out there to include a 10-foot-wide boardwalk. We're in the permitting and construction process phase. We have a nice gazebo here, potentially a little docking area here for kayaks and so on. We realize this water is very shallow, so that may prove not to be working out long term, but I can visualize this to be very similar to what you see in Duck right now. Handicap-friendly, visually not blocking your view as you drive by. It's going to be above the water, but it's not going to be at a point in which you will have your vision obscured by this facility, and there'll be various areas where you can stop and see plaques that might talk about the wildlife or the waterfowl or whatever you might see there. We also have had a lot of feedback from our folks who use this area for the windsurfing or the wind sports and so on. This is a lower area they can kind of get across without having to go up and down or drag and so on. So we think this is going to enhance the area immediately, and we hope to have this constructed completely and serviced by certainly this time next year. With that said, we'll move ahead and look at some potential uses of this facility.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. Tim shared some of the reasons why we believe the Event Center will benefit year-round tourism and the community. I'd like to share with you what the center is and where we believe it makes sense to place it on the site. Overall, the building is 48,275 square feet, which is about the size of the Food Line Grocery Store at Outer Banks Mall. The main portion is that large orange rectangle, of course. That's a 26,000-square-foot event hall. The gray bar that's on the bottom of the design is a retractable wall that can be open to connect with the outdoor event lawn and provide event developers with greater flexibility. Similarly, the dotted lines that are inside that orange rectangle are planned as retractable walls that can either be collapsed or expanded depending on the needs of the event. The flexibility of the space was a key consideration, both for the advisory committee as well as the Tourism Board. As Tim mentioned, the building is intended to host gatherings of 300 to 2,500 people. It could hold more than that, but we don't believe that the site infrastructure really would bear that well, so 300 to 2,500 people is the target. Tim mentioned some of the main use types earlier, supporting year-round events, sports, concerts, galas, smaller trade shows even. The size of the building is specific to what those use types need. Being practical with the size of the building allows us to manage the risk and also the cost associated with construction and operation ongoing. The blue K that you see there is the culinary training facility that Tim mentioned. Our hope is that this will not only help to train the workforce that we have right now, but also attract workforce to our area for that training. The lobby area, as you can see, is substantial. That can serve as a pre-function area for events, even more flexibility. We've talked about sports, and here are some of the sample layouts. The top two on the left are basketball, one court in a championship-style format, or three courts potentially. Next to that, to the right, you see a couple of volleyball layouts. There are retractable bleachers that are planned for the space, both for the sports as well as for concerts, so it would be portable. And then continuing on to the right, gymnastics at the top, wrestling, and then pickleball all along the bottom. Pickleball is the fastest-growing American sport in America. We do think that pickleball, wrestling, some of those smaller footprint sports events will be a particular appeal for the site. It's not comparable, nor is it our intention, to be a sports facility in that sense of the word, like the Rocky Mount Center, for instance, is three times the size of what we're planning, but we believe that this size can expand the use, bring in sports groups, bring in some of that off-season travel, and also be mindful of the site and where we're located. Sports travelers, as Tim mentioned, they're appealing, and they kind of came to the forefront during the advisory committee meetings for the reason that they don't have an expectation of an adjoining hotel like meeting and convention goers typically do, and also they travel Here's a look at the site and the contiguous properties that are now included. We'll take that view and spin it around. So we've reoriented. Now the bypass is on the bottom of the screen. You can see the boardwalk that Tim mentioned. The darker brown already exists, lighter brown is planned. You can also see the Pamlico Jack's Building, the Dairy Queen, and where the Mini Golf used to be located. This is with the Event Center placed. Not sure about that black bar up there. Anyhow, with the blue, the Event Center placed, you can see how the building is turned, and it it goes back to what I was saying before about that retractable wall off of the back that could be opened and connect the main event lawn with the Event Center, providing that flexibility. With the Event Center placed, do you get a better sense for the proportions of the building to the overall site and how we've been able to preserve about 3/4 of the sound view shed? That's come through loud and clear in the meetings that we've had. And then finally, this zoomed-in view that provides a sense for where we're at currently with grass overflow parking and paved parking. The darker gray areas are new paved parking. You'll notice also that perhaps that we've removed two of the curb cuts with this plan, both at the north end of the original site and what is currently going into the Dairy Queen facility. So, this does a couple of things. It removes a couple of places where people are pulling off out of traffic and pulling into traffic, but the other thing that we've been able to do is add some connectivity from one end of the site to the other, so you can literally get from one end to the other without having to pull back out on the bypass. There's also been considerable conversation about when you get to this point, it certainly would seem to make sense for a traffic signal at the grouse, that main entrance to the Event Site. So, last, but definitely not least, this slide highlights some of the next steps and the work that needs to happen. These items are significant, but having a shared vision allows us to focus our efforts behind one direction instead of trying to push multiple versions ahead. So, we have a concept. The Tourism Board would certainly and sincerely appreciate the town's support of it. The Event Center satisfies the Tourism Board's legislative mandate of attracting visitation during less-than-peak months, but it does much more than that. The center is the single greatest step we can take to create a more balanced year-round tourism economy, one that doesn't rely on 70% of its revenue to come from three months of summer. The Event Center will help our communities generate much-needed tax revenue to pay for things like beach nourishment instead of that burden falling more on property owners. The center has the potential to be a crown jewel for the Outer Banks, and it should be. It should celebrate the place we love and bring people together. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tim and Lee. Appreciate that presentation very much. I feel compelled to say, because that presentation included plans and other information that we often see in a site plan review, just for the lay viewer out there or anybody who may look at this, this was not a site plan submitted review or anything of that sort. This was an information session, and I just don't want social media to erupt with misinformation. So, we do appreciate you bringing this. You mentioned, Tim, you mentioned at the presentation that you had earlier that you had gotten good feedback. So, my only question this morning is where can folks see this, and what are the mechanisms for feedback for y'all, for anybody who may be interested?
If people are interested in more information, we have a lot to be found at outerbanks.org/faq. And there's also an email address that is on that page that allows people to register their comments and ask questions, and certainly, you know, I always welcome those inquiries as well. The number at the Visitors Bureau is 473-2138, and I'm happy to address as many questions and concerns as I can as well.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. I'll ask the board members if they have any questions this morning based on the presentation.
Just to reference to the 191 new jobs from your consultant, is there information from their report available online as well?
Yes, we have a copy of that report posted, the consultant study.
And the other one is a curiosity question. Is the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau going to run the site, or are you going to contract it out?
That is one of the questions that remains to be discussed and decided. I would anticipate that a management company would be hired for operation. They're part of the Advisory Committee's work, discovered some of these companies that specialize in what are considered the smaller centers such as this, the 50,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Lee, just one question. The email address that you referenced, is that for the, on the FAQ page, or is it just a generic email for the Visitors Bureau?
The, there is an email address that is found on that page when people go to outerbanks.org/faq. It, I want to say it's eventcenter@outerbanks.org, but I'm not sure.
But it's on there, and they can reference that.
The other way to get answers to the questions is nettles@outerbanks.org.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Sanders?
No, I'm pretty familiar with this project, so thank you for the presentation. Very informing.
Thank you.
And just, will there be any additional, do you plan any additional public sessions at this point, or does that remain to be seen?
There are none scheduled. I would imagine that as we move further into actual design and actual site layout and we begin to work through the process with the town, that there would be additional public meetings.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time this morning.
Appreciate you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director, and I will call Director Wyatt to the podium.
Not a whole lot to report out today, as always. If there's anything you want more information on, just let me know. But just diving in with the Planning Board at their last meeting, which was on June 21st, that included consideration of a special use site plan review for a three-story mixed-use structure at 4413 South Croatan Highway. The Planning Board also did a sketch plan review for a four-story 90-unit hotel proposed to be located at 6632 West Pheasant Avenue in a revised text amendment as it relates to the supplemental regulations for cottage courts. Also, they did appoint Planning Board member Megan Lambert to serve on the Voluntary Subject Subscription Service Committee, and staff did note that if there were other members of the Planning Board who just wanted to attend for informational purposes, that would be more than welcome. The Planning Board will meet again on July 19th, and at this time, that's going to include a site plan review for the hotel that I just mentioned, continued discussion on tree removal and preservation, and also updates on the NCAIA draft Residential Energy and Water Conservation Guide and the E-Tip program. I believe I updated the board on our June Board of Adjustment meeting. If not, just a very quick rundown of that. The variance request was for 119 West Waterside Lane in Nags Head. The applicant there wanted to vary the setbacks for that lot. Between the time that he submitted his application and the time that the Board of Adjustment met, he had gotten much more detailed information from his contractor that essentially proved he didn't need a variance, so. That's what occurred there. Like I mentioned, the Voluntary Subject Subscription Service, the Planning Board appointed Megan Lambert, and we're hoping to get that committee together in the August-September timeframe after the summer rush calms down a little bit. The Estreene Shoreline Management Plan, the board's actually going to receive a detailed update on that from our Deputy Planning Director Kate Jones here shortly. There's not a lot to update on the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. The grant's been submitted, and we're just waiting to hear back on notification of status. The EV plan that's been placed on the board's website, or on the town's website, for any comments or questions that the public may have about that. To my knowledge, we haven't received any comments to date. No updates on E-Tip. As I mentioned, there is a draft of the Residential Energy and Water Conservation Guide that's coming out of the AIA project, and we anticipate updating the board on that at their August 3 meeting. Wellbone, we're just looking forward to getting a grant submitted to the Visitors Bureau. That grant application is due in September. The LAD Stormwater Demonstration Project, that is complete. All components of that are in place now, and staff is now looking towards getting some educational signage placed out there to go along with it. The Dominion LED Amber Streetlight Project, staff's provided Dominion with all the comments that we received, and it appeared that there was a desire for the Cree, C-R-E-E, R-S-W, and Amber. That's what it seemed that most people were leaning towards, so we've notified Dominion about that. They'll make sure that that fixture is available anytime there needs to be a light replacement along the oceanfront. And Doughty Park and Art and Culture Events, we do have the Farmer's Market running each Thursday now through August 18th. We've had a couple. Everyone seems to be very pleased with how that's going. Yoga classes each Tuesday morning at 7:30, and we do have a summer concert series that's every Wednesday through August 3rd. That starts at 6:30 PM. We actually have a band tonight. It's the Intangible Cats, but I'm hearing that weather might be a problem, so we'll touch base on that a little bit later today. And that's all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Kelly, board members, any questions for Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir. All right, thank you. You've related some of your excitement about the expanded possibilities of munis, and so we look forward, maybe in a couple of months or so here, as you've gotten into that, some of the expanded capabilities that y'all were able to use.
Absolutely. It's just having Kelly Brady available to watch as we maneuver in our day-to-day. She's got a lot of tips to just be a little bit more efficient, so very exciting.
Fabulous. Very good. All right, thank you very much. That brings us to new business. Item G, we've already dealt with G1, which was the Visitors Bureau update. The next item on the agenda then would be committee reports, and I'll start down with Commissioner Sears.
Nothing to report. They presented.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Continue.
All right. Commissioner Brinkley.
The Next Year Advisory Council meets on Tuesday, August 2nd, so I'll have one for that before we get to our next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Looks like Kate's going to take care of mine, so I'll just wait for the next one.
All right, very good. I don't maintain a committee, although I do attend the mayor's luncheons and some other events on behalf of the town. A couple of items, and I know that the town manager sent an email. I have been following up with the question of repaving 158. You'll recall that the plan that we heard was that there would be two contracts for the paving of 158 in Nags Head. Each contract would give the contractor up to 18 months to complete their work, which meant we were possibly looking at up to three years of dealing with repaving 158. I had reached out to our representatives in Raleigh to see if there wasn't any wisdom and money available to combine that into a single contract, and followed up as the session was ending, and we were not getting an answer because our representatives were not getting answers from the department. And so, we are reaching out, have reached out to the representatives, and I think in a future meeting, Andy, we will have some representatives of DOT, or y'all will meet with them at least, and we'll get some additional information on that. Somewhat not really related to that, oh, I've also been in touch with the County Board Chair Bob Woodard about our request for payment for the Event Site since that topic came up this morning. I do expect an answer on that shortly. And then, one other thing that I'll report is we've had conversations over the years about our towns working a little more cooperatively and trying to find some efficiencies here and there. It's difficult because everybody's territorial, but I came back from the mayor's summit, the American Flood Coalition's Summit in Washington, DC, and was able to observe how some other communities have built coalitions to help them with their flood planning and with their resiliency planning. So, I came back and talked to the mayors about the possibility, and I've also talked with the town manager. You know, without anybody giving up any autonomy in their projects, we're all doing flood planning and resiliency projects individually. If we got ourselves together to share more information about that, where the money is available, potentially share the cost of grant writers, you know, we've hired our own grant writer, but there is a lot of money out there that's available. There's probably going to be more money available for these resiliency projects, and the other mayors were enthusiastic about us possibly getting together to talk about at least that particular topic, and maybe we could kind of break the logjam there and have additional conversation about things that we can share. You know, we've talked about our own Septic Health Initiative and kind of sharing, finding mechanisms to share that information since we're sort of leading the pack on that, and hopefully that can sort of fall under the same umbrella.
Yes, ma'am. The budget that's hopefully going to be signed any day now includes a portion of sales tax now going to the Department of Transportation. Might behoove us to ask if any of that money's going into this region since we've been, we're the ones that have lost all the money to all the urban areas.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if they're going to put another portion of sales tax into it, are they going to help out this district for our projects which might impact 158?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is an update on the Shoreline Management Plan, and Kate Jones will do that for us.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Morning.
Happy to provide you all with an update for the Estreene Shoreline Management Plan project. Maybe I'll wait for Kevin to come back, but we're about halfway through the project, so we thought it'd be a good time to bring you guys up to speed on what has been going on and has transpired since the project started. So...
I think you can go ahead.
You want me to go ahead? Okay. I will advance. So, I won't go too far into this, but just to say that the foundations for the Estreene Shoreline Management Plan were developed in 2015, 2017 during the community engagement for both the VCAPs and the comp plan process. The final VCAPs report and comp plan identified a shoreline management plan as a strategy to address some of the concerns that were voiced during these engagement processes. And then in 2019, we were approached by a group of homeowners that were interested in looking at the Estreene Shoreline and had some concerns about their own properties. And in 2020, we applied for and received $75,000 worth of funding from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and then the town generously also set aside a match for that grant to fund this project. So, I like this slide because it really shows the breadth of our shoreline, our Estreene Shoreline, and all of, I know you can't really read all the labels, but just all the different types of property owners that are involved in our Estreene Shoreline, everything from public land, Jockeys Ridge State Park... Everything from public land, Jockeys Ridge State Park, to a golf course here that a lot of visitors and residents enjoy, and a lot of even businesses on the Causeway in this area. So I just wanted, I felt like this was a neat map to share with you all. We've been using it for some outreach. And if you guys have questions along the way, just stop me. So project outcomes. What are we going to see from this project? So, and this is what was written into the grant in the beginning. Where actually the consultants are classifying what exists along our shoreline. And they're coming up with types, very generalized types. And then they will look at the identification of solutions to those types. So this is a very, very high level, very general. So the thinking there is that really wherever you live along the shoreline, the Estreene Shoreline, there's some information here for you that will help you perhaps begin the decision-making process. From there, narrowing down into 10 potential project areas. So these will be areas that, you know, will have high potential for eventually becoming an on-the-ground project. And then from the 10, three sites will be taken all the way through conceptual level design. And those three sites will really be set up to use in grant funding, to go after money, to actually build those projects. In addition to that, we'll have the plan itself, which will synthesize this process, will synthesize the engineering report. And we'll have everything in a neat package that we can reference back to. And, you know, whether it's to homeowners or for grant writing, but we have this resource that basically talks comprehensively about our shoreline. Okay. So I wanted to hit on this real quick. Why are, y'all might hear about nature-based solutions. And I think there's a lot of definitions of what that means. But why are they important? And I just wanted to hit on these three things. There are studies out there that suggest coastal nature-based solutions can mitigate flood and storm damage better than just gray infrastructure alone. So really, we want to put more tools in our toolbox. Funding. There are a lot of grant opportunities out there right now for projects that incorporate nature-based solutions. So we're really trying to look ahead and to be in a position where we can capitalize on future funding. Co-benefits, water quality improvement, habitat, aesthetics, can even go into carbon sequestration. So there are a lot of co-benefits that come with some of these solutions. Okay. Here's our project schedule. We began in October 2021, which was the kickoff. We are currently right about here. Well, we are here. And we will have a final draft to present December 2022. That is our finish line. So the next couple of months will be where a lot of the rubber hits the road and the consultants are working hard on getting these next steps completed. So total of 14 months. The circles there represent advisory committee meetings where we have met and gone over this information with the committee and received their feedback. Just another way to show you all what's been accomplished thus far. These were the tasks that were also laid out in that project schedule. We have completed 1 through 6. And next, we are, in the next couple of months, completing 7, 8, and 9. And along the same path is community and stakeholder engagement. We have completed three meetings thus far. We will have another meeting in August, August 10. And then a community meeting, which will be August 11 or 12. We're still trying to nail down that date based on everyone's availability. But the purpose of that community meeting, which we'll talk about in a minute when I get to what the next steps are, we'll go through that. Any questions?
I'll save mine till the end.
Okay. We did put out a public survey. And the goal of this survey was to really get a sense of what people's knowledge was and their concerns were of the Estreene Shoreline. It went out to all the general public. So we did receive some great feedback and participation from that public survey. That is available on our website. But I have a slide in just a minute that summarizes some of that feedback. Next, we'll be looking to send out one that specifically targets Estreene Shoreline property owners. We're gonna be asking a little more specific questioning and trying to get feedback from the specific owners. Key survey takeaways. Really just asked what people consider important, how they use the shoreline, where they live, how long they've been here, what they like to do. In bold, you can see some of those, some of the feedback items listed here. You know, I think people have a medium amount of knowledge and certainly a lot of interest, whether they use it for kayaking, or boating, or fishing, or sound shoreline accessies, or they own property. There is a lot of interest in this project and taking care of our Estreene Shoreline. Protecting property, residential and commercial, was the most important priority regarding planning. And then the benefits, recreational, personal property, infrastructure, people, cultural, five most important Estreene Shoreline benefits. So those full results are available on our website as well. Y'all are welcome to look through those if you're interested. I wanted to talk about this briefly. This is a really important component of this plan. We are working with Moffett and Nickel to, as well as Biohabitats. But, oh, that's okay. Moffett and Nickel, as well as the Coastal Studies Institute. That first graphic on your left. One of the data sets that we were missing was good bathymetry info for our Estreene Shoreline, especially right there between Roanoke Island and Nags Head. So we recognized from the beginning, in order to have good data to plug into the modeling, we needed good bathymetry. So the Coastal Studies Institute went out and actually collected, did some surveys along the shoreline and out into the estreene water and did some specific depth finding, which developed into some topo bathymetry points. And were able to use this very specific information into our model. So that was a really important part of this, and they've been great partners to work with. The second slide shows the historical erosion analysis that was completed. And you can see the shorelines changed there. And that was calculated and will be used to determine later in this project what will work where potentially. And on the right is a data set that was already available, a very, bathymetry available to the public. But again, this bathymetry is useful, but it didn't have that detail that we really needed, which Coastal Studies Institute was able to obtain. So again, a lot of really good information that we have from this project now to make good decisions based on the modeling that will be done with wave energy and wind energy. And I will say that we recognize this was important because while you may say, well, let's just build a project and hope that it works. You can do that. But as we've seen with a few projects through the years, sometimes they work well, sometimes they don't. So when you have this data behind it, there's a higher chance of success. And we wanted to make sure that the projects that we potentially are involved in that are as successful as they could be. Okay. So this one is a little bit whitewashed. But this is getting into the rationale for prioritizing sites, which we're working through now. And we'll be looking at things like ownership and access, erosion history, infrastructure protection, and site size. These were the suggested, these were the suggested parameters that were brought to the committee. And we had some good suggestions from the committee. One was that a site's accessibility to the public is important, that it needs to be able to be seen and be a highly visible site to really educate people about some of these Estreene Shoreline management techniques. It was also suggested that the final three sites that were selected really ideally would represent a variety of shorelines. So not all just one type. So maybe you have a couple of different types of existing shorelines that we'd be diving into in a detailed way. And that would be most useful for people. And these were, I know this is hard to read as well, but this was a slide we presented to the committee as well. And these are the initial pass. I know there's 11 sites here. So, but these were sites. And the way these were chosen was, and again, it's difficult to see, but there's a little bit of red here and there. And that represents areas of high erosion. And we, a lot of the sites were chosen based on those areas and the need for protection. Some of them were also chosen based on ownership. For example, there's some town-owned properties here along the Causeway. So that could be an opportunity. Or, you know, when you own a property, it can make a project a little bit easier. But in addition, it represents a variety of types of projects. So we will be narrowing these down again to 10. And then from there, as I said before, to three. So you all will certainly see this again. And please don't hesitate to provide any input at any time. Our doors are always open. And then we'll keep you in the loop. You're, of course, invited to attend any and all the meetings as well. Just reiterating our next steps. Refine the site selection criteria, propose the 10 project areas, prioritize the three sites, and complete that conceptual design. And then actually the planned compilation. So again, with those three sites, we're really setting ourselves up to go after grant funding and get one of these projects built.
Good. Good. Commissioner Cahill, I know you had a question.
As you go and select your final choices in the design and you mention grant funding, are you looking for any other sources of funding other than public, other than town funding?
Yes.
I hope we're not going to use town funding for private projects.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly. And I should have clarified. We're looking at other sources of funding. So specifically grant funding outside of town funding. And of course, you know, these are the things we have to work through. But there would be, whether it's a private or a public project, there would be different, of course, ownership and different avenues to work through and how that would actually work. But yes, there's a lot of grant funding out there right now for these types of projects. And we want to be in a position to go after, after that funding.
And I'm a great admirer of Carteret County. They do a lot of good work down there. Of course, they have the advantage, they have a NOAA office, they have a UNC facility. And they also have a Duke Marine Lab facility. But they do an awful lot of shoreline projects down there. And it wouldn't hurt to contact whichever entities in charge of their projects because I get information all the time about what projects they're doing. And they do a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
They do a lot. They do a lot shoreline, just like we do. So.
That's a good point. They're a great resource.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yep.
Commissioner Sears?
Not at this time.
Just a really great presentation. What I saw in there about the new homeowners packet for people that buy along the Estreene Shoreline, very similar to what came out of the septic.
True.
You know, about new homeowners coming to Nags Head, which I think is, that's great. But I look forward to it being completed.
Really great work. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Now, as the board knows, I sit in on this committee. And I just like the forward thinking and the, that it's, you know, we're working with living shorelines and breakwaters and trying to, you know, prevent just bulkheadings. So it's a great project.
May I?
Yes.
You just mentioned something that brought it to me. It sounds like to me that somebody's gonna want some legislation at some point in time for breakwaters and different things. Because everything that's been mentioned isn't necessarily allowed under the law. So you might want to think about where you're gonna need legislative help. If you're talking about breakwaters, it might not be just, if you're gonna discuss them confined to the Estreene, but also the ocean side.
Right. Yes. And I would urge, you know, as Commissioner Cahill suggested, there are other communities out there. The American Flood Coalition and the North Carolina staffer is Tony McEwen, who used to be in Mayor Sappho's office in Wilmington. Tony now works for the American Flood Coalition, covering North and South Carolina, and is a wealth of resource for information out there about sources of funds. And one of the things that Tony and I have talked fairly extensively about since I came back is they are willing to coordinate meetings. And they are willing to come in and make presentations. And if we wanted, you know, I think if, it would be helpful to get communities together who were doing the same thing, they would be a great resource. They would plan that entirely, coordinate it, bring everybody together. So I think reaching out to Tony would also be a good idea.
Okay.
Very good idea. Thank you.
He's with the American Flood Coalition?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, I think the more outreach we can do, the better for these types of issues.
Yes.
I think that would be beneficial, yes.
Yep. We, you know, we're fortunate, you know, that we are out. Carteret County does great work. For a town our size, we're also doing some really, really good things. And it's not, it's partly about learning. It's also partly about sharing information.
I will say that we are the first town or municipality in North Carolina to do an Estreene Shoreline Management Plan of the whole town's shoreline. So that's...
That's very good.
That's very, thank you. I think that's very innovative.
Good. This next item may take us a little bit, and we're at 10 o'clock. Anybody up for a 10-minute, about a 10-minute recess? So board will be in recess for about 10 minutes. Consideration of amendments to the town code regarding beach driving. And deputy manager Amy Miller and chief Webster.
Good morning, mayor and commissioners. Today, we bring forward a change to our beach driving ordinance. Previously, we have had a beach driving program with reciprocity with Killable Hills. Killable Hills has declined participation beginning on October 2022. This ordinance reflects their decision to end the reciprocal agreement. I wanted to bring to everybody's attention and be very transparent about the fee changes for the beach driving permits. This ordinance change doesn't have a dollar amount in it. It simply reflects the fee schedule because that way we're not having to, you know, miss changing two pieces of information. It just simply reflects the fee schedule. The fee schedule that we are operating under now, that was adopted with the budget, beginning in October, the beach driving permit is increased to $100 unless you are a property owner or a resident. And that way, it would be $50. But you do have to come into town hall so we can verify your proof of residency. We are not sure if Killable Hills will have their own separate program. But we will make sure that we work with them in making sure that our beach driving stickers are easily identifiable as the Town of Nags Head and large enough to see. It will be a different color and a different shape than theirs if they do have, decide to do the program. And we realize that we need to get the messaging out as well to reflect the change in the fee. And I think that is everything. If you have any questions, I don't know if I can answer everything right now just because I'm not sure what Killable Hills will be doing. But again, we will make sure that we work with them to make sure that their program is easily distinguished from our program.
All right. Thank you. Questions? I'll start down on this end with Commissioner Sanders.
No, sir.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you.
Commissioner Cahill?
Yes, a couple. One is, in the ordinance, all you do is reference, as you say, the fee schedule.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Should there be an appendix to that? So if anybody goes to the ordinance to look at beach driving, it should have an appendix somewhere attached to it that talks about the fee schedule.
Okay.
Other than just saying fee schedule. Otherwise, it tells you to go online. Well, if somebody goes online and they buy a permit, they're going to have to pay the $100.
Yes, that's true.
So, and our residents are not going to be happy if they get directed online to paying $100 instead of 50. So we need to be much more clear about what we're doing with that.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other is, in Section 8-84, rules of operation on town beaches, about Nagshead beaches, instead of just saying town.
Sure.
Simply because, since we've been joined in the past couple of years with Kill Devil Hills.
That's a good point.
We need to make sure that we reference Nagshead, not town. We don't want to be confused with anyone else.
That's a good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sears?
Commissioner Cahoon touched on my items.
And I have mentioned this to the manager, and I was glad to hear Amy reference it, just making our sticker distinctive, because folks are good, folks are not going to recognize the line, and we're going to get people driving down if Kill Devil Hills has a program. And so, being able to recognize our permit from theirs is going to be important.
And maybe, I think we have signage that says town permit required at the accesses and at 8th Street.
Nagshead town permit.
Now, you may need to reference Nagshead town permit.
Yeah, all of our signage, every beach access has it. We have it as well at the entrance to the town, we have signs, and we need to make note that on those signs during beach driving season, that a Nagshead town permit is required. The suggestion about where it talks about the fee schedule, where it's referenced in the ordinance, I guess it's in C, 83-C, fee, somewhere you should put in parentheses, "C appendix," and have the appendix attached.
It's also referenced in 885-E.
E. And I know this is probably not going to sound entirely correct, but at the entrance to where the town line is, 8th Street, facing north, there should be a sign put up on the beach that says Town of Nagshead Beach Driving Permit Required when we start having drivers.
In season, you know. It's a shame that we have to do that, but I think at this point, we will have to do So the signage specifically is not in the ordinance, but the reference to the, to the fee schedule would be. So I believe the motion, if we're inclined to approve this, would be to adopt the ordinance with the insertion of references to the current fee, currently adopted fee schedule.
And the town of Nagshead.
Oh, and the town of Nagshead, I'm sorry, so those two items. So with that, a motion would be in order.
Would it be easier just to put the fee in here?
Not if you attach appendix to the ordinance.
Okay, because.
I mean, that way the appendix can be changed at any time.
How would someone reference this, on muni code?
Well, I mean, I think for the, for the normal person seeking to find out about this, they would look on the town's website for information on beach driving and not necessarily use the ordinance to find out about it. And that, we plan to have plenty of information, either in the tackle shops or on the website, about where you would go to get a permit, how much you would pay, and so forth. Now, the ordinance itself, the item, it's C in 883-C is where it references the fee, and it's typically always referenced the fee schedule. The other item down below in 885, that's really talking about getting a beach driving permit if you're a disabled individual. And so I think what we were attempting to do was just make them consistent between both, because it's not a separate fee, it's just, it's the same fee for, you know, someone who's disabled is getting a beach driving permit, just like somebody who's not disabled. And so we could put the specific fees in here, so it's more clear and we're not referencing anything externally.
That's fine, because the fee's always been the same for everybody, now it's not.
That's changed.
And that's going to be the big issue.
So I would rather do that than address it as an appendix, because that way we can do this right now. If we have to come up with an appendix, you know, we probably need to adopt the appendix too. And so I don't know if we could just come up with some quick language under C that just references the specific fee for both residents, property owners, and then everyone else.
I mean, I think the fee was in there before, so.
You know, if we want to come back to this, we could, we could draft something to put up on the screen.
Well, I think that we can, I think that we can just direct and approve that, that in, that the fees would be inserted in Section 883-C.
Okay, that works.
That we would, that the, we'd insert the fees as the change, and we would change the reference to town beaches to Nagshead beaches.
Well, and also wherever it says the town permit, the Nagshead permit.
Yes, all references to.
All references to the town should say the Nags, should say Nagshead.
Okay.
Yep.
And I also just want to make sure that everyone knew that if you do, which we've had a lot of success with the online permits, our ordinance is hyperlinked when you go online, and you have to check that you read the ordinance, now whether they actually do or not, but the ordinance is hyperlinked when you buy the permit, and we can also post it in the front if anybody wants to look at it and read it.
We do a fact sheet, which we give out with the permit, which describes not only the beach driving rules, but a lot of other things we want people to know about. And that's the main thing we use to communicate once they get a permit.
But the permit for Nagshead has to be bought at Town Hall.
If you're a resident.
If you're a resident or property owner.
To get the $50 fee.
Right, exactly, okay.
Direct gives us the opportunity.
To check.
To check and to present the, and to present the information. Okay, so then, if we're so inclined, a motion to insert, to approve the amended ordinance with the insertion in 883-C of the fees, to change all the references to town beaches and town permits and other references that use town to Nagshead.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Yeah, I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate that. Shame to have to do that, but so it is. Next item on our agenda is G5, Consideration of Debris Removal Agreement. This will be Andy and David, or Andy.
It looks like it's going to be me.
Yes.
David is at a pre-application meeting for our CAMA major permit for our Public Works project.
Oh, good.
And he's hoping to be over here soon. I'd like him to be over here to give the beach nourishment update, but we can do that as well. So David obviously put all this together, he does this for us every year, and back in May, he put together an RFP for our disaster debris management and removal services, and that would cover us for the coming fiscal year. And so he does a pretty detailed analysis of the proposals, and he looks at price and qualifications and references and a number of factors. He received three proposals, you know, I know his memo referenced nine, and that was an error. We only actually received three proposals, which were listed by name in the summary sheet. So we got proposals from TFR Enterprises out of Texas. We also got proposals from Crowder Gulf, and then there was one other firm, let's see, it's DRC Emergency Services out of Mobile, Alabama. So after he conducted his analysis, he's recommending that we go with TFR Enterprises, and that's what we're asking the board to do today, is approve the agreement, or allow us to enter into an agreement with TFR Enterprises for disaster debris removal services.
Okay, thank you. Which, after the analysis, was also the lowest cost of the three.
Price was one of the factors, and TFR was the lowest price.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, Commissioner Sears, any questions concerned?
Did we check references on that, Andy?
We received reference information, but I'm not sure we went and called them on top of receiving the information. References were required as part of their submittal.
Commissioner Cahoon?
Following up, has the company ever done work in North Carolina?
I would have to ask Dave, I can find out from David if they have.
And if they have, excuse me, why not?
Thank you.
If they have, how were the, were the customers satisfied?
Okay.
Because as it refers to North Carolina, not to Texas or Louisiana.
Correct.
And the other is, since I didn't see a contract in here, what's the response time in the contract? If there's.
48 hours.
Okay. And. The last question is, during that 48 hours, who responds to debris in case of an Isabel-type event?
We, I mean, our forces would respond as soon as we're able to, and we also have a, an agreement with Derek County, but they would probably be under the same.
I'd say they're going to be in the same situation.
Same boat we're in, and so it's, you know, 48 hours is likely the quickest we're going to get someone to respond, but we fortunately do have good equipment and crews that can do some things for us.
And in a Isabel, it won't be enough. The only reason I ask that is because there used to be contracts with local companies somewhere around that would respond. They actually prepositioned equipment in Nagshead and those type of events, so that they could get to work immediately. And I worry about, if we're waiting for 48 hours for a company to come, what are we going to do in that first 48 hours?
Right.
It appears that we've got a gap time that we're not addressing.
And I think a lot of, this is driven by FEMA, because we're going to be requesting reimbursement for a lot of this, and so part of the analysis is, you know, their experience with FEMA and being able to manage that process.
And we got our money, we got our money before, but.
Yeah.
If you have a contract in place, FEMA usually honors it. It's when you go in and do contracts after an event that you're going to have trouble. So if we had a contract for the first 48 hours, we would qualify for FEMA. Because it's not going to be a when, it's going, an if it's going to be a when.
It is a when, it absolutely is a when question.
I just don't want us to be unprepared.
Point. I would kind of echo what Commissioner Sears and Cahoon said, if we require references, I don't know why we wouldn't check them if it's required part of the packet, and then about doing business in North Carolina, just to make sure that we've got somebody that's going to be reliable in our time of need. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yeah, I think, I think you guys have pretty much covered it.
Is there, are they holding this price, I mean, if we act on this at a later date, to give staff time to respond to these requests for information?
The only concern at this point is what, if we act on it at a later date, we don't have anything until that date.
Yes. Yeah.
Right.
Do you have a big one?
I hadn't thought that we would have a need, but we could, we could certainly do that. If it was just one or two items, we could certainly deal with it pretty quickly.
Yeah, we could, we could pause on this and come back to it, if I could find out the answers to these questions. If, I mean, certainly if we haven't had time to get reference checks via phone, then that would take more time.
Okay, well, once you work on that, we'll see, and then we can, we can plan on a brief mid-month meeting if we need to.
Can we get a copy of the contract, proposed contract?
Yeah.
It wasn't in our pack.
Did you hear that, Andy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll table this item, and we will have, we'll be coming back after a closed session, I believe, so we've got a little bit of time. Speaking of which, Dan, setting that item aside, that brings us to Item H, which are items from the town attorney. John, do you want to speak to this now? We'll be coming back to this.
No, I'll just provide you all with the appropriate motion when you all are ready to enter closed session, otherwise I have nothing to present today.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you. Then that will bring us to Item I-1, which is modifications to the Public Services Water Pay Plan and Org Chart. Andy?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Something that we discussed during our budget process, that was potential for future consideration, was some of the positions in our Public Services Water Department. You know, we had talked about making some changes in the future, you know, for succession planning purposes, you know, we knew that Nancy Carawan, who was serving as our Water System Manager, may have been looking at sort of what her next steps in life would be in a few years, and so we thought that, you know, it may be an opportunity to consider some changes. Nancy has now since been willing to be promoted to the Public Services Director, and so that gives us an opportunity to look at this information now. So what we're proposing to do is basically eliminate Nancy's position of Water System Manager, and then allow the Water Distribution Supervisor and Water Operations Supervisor to be reclassified as Superintendent, essentially giving them full responsibility for distribution and operations, and then no longer having them operate under the umbrella of a Water System Manager. And so we've looked at staffing, and we feel like this is an appropriate way to structure things, it's actually the way things had been structured in years past, and so we're bringing this to you primarily because of the promotion of Nancy allowed us to do this now. So what we're asking for the board to do is approve several organizational charts, one for Public Services as a whole, and then also two others, one for operations and one for water distribution. With that, we would ask the board to approve a new pay plan, which essentially eliminates the supervisor positions and Nancy's old position, and then creates the Water Superintendent positions in operations and distribution. And then finally, we've got job descriptions for both those positions. So we're just asking the board to act on this, so we can make these changes, effectively eliminating one position from the Water Department.
All right. So I would suggest we take these one at a time, and the first being the Public Services Organization and Staffing Organization Chart.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then the, next is the Water Distribution Organizational Chart, which you have before you.
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion, and a second to adopt, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The, let's take the Public Works Water Operations Organizational Chart.
Make a motion to adopt as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then let's back up to the Public Works grade list. You see, the red marks are, let's see. Can you see, the red marks are, let's see, pretty near the bottom of page two, I believe?
You're doing the grade list, not the class list, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, grade list.
It's a class list, it's very confusing.
Okay. Yes, this is, this is the, the fourth item, the Public Works grade list.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Then that would, let's see.
Do we have to do the two job?
The two job description, so let's, let's take the Water Distribution Superintendent Job Description.
Proof is presented.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And that brings us to the Water Operations Superintendent Job Description, which is the last item on that list.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Was that all of them, was there a, I think that's all of them, a grade list that I missed?
Yeah, the grade list was adopted.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Nancy, appreciate it. Then that would bring us to item I-2, Discussion of the Nags Header and Lightkeeper Award Process. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this, this item came up in one of your earlier meetings this year, and I think that we had given you in your packet a summary of the recipients over the last twenty, twenty-plus years for these awards. I believe these awards were created in around the 2000 timeframe, and they're two separate awards. One is to honor, both are to honor folks who have made significant contributions to the town in different ways. The Lightkeeper is someone who's served on a board or a committee or made other significant contribution to the town. The Nags Header Award is really to honor a deceased person who has sort of left a legacy on the town through the things that they represent or the things that they've done. So they're significant awards, and, and around the 2012 timeframe, you see that there's been some gaps in granting the awards, and there's been some gaps in recent years, up until when the board honored Annette and John Ratzenberger a few months ago. And so I think the board, board's idea is that we sort of need to re-promote this process and get the message out to the public so they understand what the awards are and what the process is to nominate folks, and what the timeline for doing that is. And so our attempt today was to sort of tell the board what they already know, which is about the awards, but also to establish a timeline for nominating folks and then presenting the awards, or making the decision and presenting the awards. And so Carolyn and Michelle had put something together. You have a description of each of the awards and also a timeline, which was mentioned in the summary sheet. So what we were proposing to do was put the call out for nominations sometime around the beginning of the year, and then ask that the nomination forms be submitted to the town clerk by April 1st, and then the board would make the consideration in May, and then announce the award and recognize the folks in the June timeframe. And so that's what we would be suggesting, and we know that we need to do a better job promoting this and getting the message out to the public about the awards, so that's what we would plan to do. But this is sort of a proposed process for doing these, and we look forward to any feedback that you have.
All right. And so if we're, also in terms of approving this, there are really three documents, one the process, and then the descriptions of the Lightkeeper and the Nags Header. And I think when the time comes, we can approve all of those together. I guess I'll start on this end. Commissioner Sears, any questions or observations about this?
No, I think it's a good way to move forward and recognize the folks that are doing for Nags Head what Nags Head's about.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
Now, I'm glad we're bringing it back to the forefront. I'm glad that the Ratzenbergers were honored this year with it, and I would commend Michelle and Carolyn for pulling it all together and bringing it back forward, along with the manager, and it's time to get it out there.
Yeah, agreed. All right, Commissioner, bring it.
Great way to honor these people, and considering the gaps that we've had, I'm glad that we're getting it back on track. Thanks to Michelle and Carolyn for, for working on that, but I look forward to this continuing and getting the information out to the public. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, I agree too. I think it's a great thing for the town and continue it.
It is. It is. You know, one of the things I think we sometimes don't know enough of, because I am part of the board's job, is to sort of deal with, deal with issues, but we also have a lot of great things going on, and we have a lot of great citizens who've made a lot of great contributions, and sharing more good news with our citizens about, about these people and their stories, I think is a, is a really important thing that we need to be doing better. So I'm excited about this, and look forward to those nominees when the time comes. So, thank you. So a, a motion to approve the process, the Nags Head Lightkeeper Description, and the Nags Header Description would be in order.
Sub moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thank you very much. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
And I see that David is here, so just in time for project updates, so we now come to that item for the upcoming Beach Nurishment Project, the rollback process, and the request for lifeguard funding. So we'll start with Beach Nurishment. David?
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Up here on the screen, I've got an exhibit, which is going to, I'm going to reference during this presentation, just to provide an overview of the upcoming 2022 Post Oriente Beach Restoration Project. Okay, there, right now, based upon the schedule that has been provided by Great Lakes Dredge and Dock Company, we're looking at beach fill operations starting to commence as early as next week, July 13th, and it's going to be structured in two parts. They, right now, are proposing to have the Ellis Island, which is the largest dredge in their fleet, come down and work on the very south end of the project. And up here at the top of the page, we have what is known as reaches three and four, and that's basically from James Street, which is on the left-hand side of the page, all the way to the very end, and this is Ramp One and the Park Service. The sub-line, which is the line that basically connects the dredge to shore, is going to be located just south of Limulus Street. And so the way that, that project, or that portion of the project will be sequenced is that they will work on the south portion, going south of Limulus all the way to the end of the project, and then they will go ahead and flip the elbow, and then work north. Now, the, the other section of the project, which is Reach Two, that they will follow that up with a separate dredge, and that's the Dodge Island, which is a smaller dredge, it's about thirty-six hundred cubic yard capacity. They will come in a couple weeks later, right now they're scheduled to come in in about mid-August, and then they will start around Indigo Street. I've got the red line right here, which denotes the sub-line, and so that is about the midpoint for them. They will work south, and then work north, and then from there, the next sub-line is located up at Hargrove Street, or just south of Hargrove Street. And again, they will work south, and then they will work north, with the endpoint being about the Comfort Inn South, that's the end of Reach Two. And so as far as the schedule goes, the schedule, like I said, the Ellis Island is scheduled to be on station on July 13th. They estimate it's going to be about two to three weeks to go ahead and finish off Reaches Three and Four, and then there will be about a two-week lag time before the Dodge Island comes on station, and they estimate that that portion of Reach Two will take about two to three weeks to complete. So by the beginning of September, we would anticipate all the beach fill operations to be complete, and the only thing remaining is demobilization of some of the equipment and material on the beach. There's still a little bit of work to do, to occur in advance of the active construction. We still have some pipeline corridor approvals that need to take place through some of the regulatory agencies, a dredge inspection to be conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as some other checklists that need to be filled out in advance of construction. We anticipate mobilization, especially for the south end of the project, to start here later this week, or the beginning of next week, which would include some delivery of onshore pipe. The staging area that we have for the south end of the project is at Junko Street, and then from there, for the northern end of the project, that staging area will be Gulf Stream Way. And we have been working with a contractor to go ahead and make preparations in advance of them staging material and equipment. So that, in short, really covers the information that I had, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have pertaining to the project.
Great, thank you, David. Any question, Bob?
No, all the dates are up on the website to try to get the word out to the public, and, but they're not quite firm.
They are not yet, but we will go ahead and post those today.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's been some social media out there about it being imminent, but not with precise dates, so.
You're talking about waiting to hear back from some of the regulatory groups? Do you, when do you anticipate getting the final approval and all that?
As soon as possible. We've been having regular meetings. We had a pre-construction meeting a couple weeks ago with all the regulatory agencies, and then we have a standing, a standing Tuesday meeting. We had one yesterday, and we had one the week prior, so we've been communicating with those regulatory agencies, making sure that we get everything that we need, so we don't get held up with initiating construction. So as soon as possible is where I believe it.
Thank you for your work.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
No, great job, happy to start it. We just need to make sure on our front and center on our homepage, needs to be, work is coming, work is coming.
Yeah.
Because I know we've got it saying July 13th through September, we need to almost say now.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, appreciate it, excited to see this, see this happen.
Yep, thank you.
Need to work for our next project? Sooner rather than later.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Sanitation cart rollback, Andy?
Okay. So we just wanted to give the board an update on the new process that we started this year, the program to actually have a contractor roll carts out and back along the beach road. So as the board will recall, we started this process with the goal of, you know, obviously eliminating a lot of the blight we're seeing along the beach road with overflowing carts, and to improve the appearance and orderliness of the path and the beach road with carts being placed out, and sort of, it's left up to the property as to whether or not they get back or get out on time, and then also, one of the benefits of the program is to sort of even out these tonnages that we're collecting on Monday and Thursday. Obviously, we have two collection days, and our ordinance requires that each property have a certain number of carts based on the number of bedrooms in the home, and that whole formula doesn't really work if the carts don't get out on both days of the week, then there's just not enough capacity. And I think that's what we've really been seeing in, in prior years, is that the capacity's all being utilized on Monday and not on Thursday, because no one's rolling the carts out. So obviously, this is something that we entered into from May 1 to October 31st. We have a contract with Trash Detail to do this, and they've been working four days a week in the town since May 1. This covers all properties, all single-family residential properties with driveways on either the beach road NC-12 or South Old Oregon Inlet Road SR-1243. The contractor comes Sunday, they roll the carts out to the street. On Wednesday morning, they come back and do it again, rolling carts out to the street, then they roll back on Monday and Thursday. As the board will recall, we did provide folks with the opportunity to opt out of the program. We sent letters to every property owner who would be considered in the program before the service started, explained that if you're a property owner, or if you don't rent your home and you can take care of the carts, then you can certainly opt out. We encouraged all the rental properties to participate in the program, primarily because they don't typically have somebody that will come and roll the carts out and roll them back. So currently, we have about eight hundred and seventy-five properties that are in the program, and we have about a hundred and sixty-five that have opted out. In reviewing that list of the hundred and sixty-five who've opted out, most have stated they live in the home, or that they don't rent the home. There are some rental properties that have opted out, and we've sort of discouraged them from doing that, but we, we ultimately cannot control whether they decide to opt out or not. But we are following up and making sure that property owners are doing what they're supposed to in terms of keeping care of their carts and making sure that things aren't overflowing. So I mentioned the tonnages, you know, I did ask Public Services for some information, and just to give you an idea, so, you know, a couple weeks in June from last year, on a Monday, two Mondays in a row, we had ninety tons on one Monday and eighty-eight tons on the, on the following Monday. Those similar weeks this year, the week we had ninety last year, we had fifty-four tons on Monday this year, and we had eighty-eight tons, the other Monday last year, we had seventy tons this year. So the tonnages are dropping anywhere from ten to twenty tons on Monday, and a lot of that's being picked up on Thursday, which shows us the process is working. And I think what you, we were trying to add capacity last year by making sure people had the right number of carts and delivering carts to properties, but I think a lot of the, fewer carts that are overflowing this year are because the tonnages are being collected on Thursday now, which they weren't before. So we do see that as a bit of a success. Another benefit to our staff, we have always gotten out of our trucks and picked up bags and picked up things on the ground, and the drivers do not leave it sitting there. And there were some things on social media not too long ago, that the drivers don't get out of the trucks. That is not true. We do get out of the trucks, and it makes the process very inefficient for them to have to get out of the trucks. And I can tell you, they're not doing that nearly as much now, which makes the whole day go much better. It actually, you know, makes the, the process, they get to the transfer station sooner, they're probably working less overtime, because they're not having to do this as much, and it's much safer for them to do that. So that's an added benefit to this program. Trash Detail is kind of looking out for us a good bit. When they notice that carts are damaged, what they do is they leave the carts flipped over, upside down by the roadway, you might have seen this, and so that alerts us to go and get the cart, either make a repair or charge them for a new cart, and so it's allowing us to get a lot of the damaged carts repaired.
Andy, when the drivers get out of the truck, which is a safety hazard at some point in time, and put the bags up, do they make a note of that so that citation can be sent to that house?
They, we, we don't ask the drivers to do that, but we are doing that on the weekends. And I was, I can, I was going to cover that in the presentation, but, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to burden the drivers with doing that, but we have, we have been going out every weekend and documenting when bags are on the ground. So they're obviously doing that before the driver, the drivers come pick up on Monday, and they're either documenting Saturday afternoon or Sunday. and they're either documenting Saturday afternoon or Sunday. Already covered the Monday. So, we've been communicating a lot with the rental property managers. We had several meetings over the off-season when we were sort of structuring this program to get feedback. They were very supportive of this program. We've been sending them regular emails about the program, encouraging to communicate with the cleaners and their staff not to roll the carts out on Saturday if they're in this program. We've now put stickers on all the carts that are in the program that basically say, between May 1 and October 31st, do not roll this cart out, we have a service that rolls it out. And we see the number of carts being rolled out on Saturday dropping, but they're still coming out on Saturday. And what the rental management companies are telling us is that property renters are still rolling them out on Saturday. They're kind of programmed to do that. If they, if they do it and done it in years past, they're still doing it. And so, it's getting better, but we're still having to fight the communication battle, and they're helping us on that. So, the other thing I mentioned is that we are on, out on the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday, looking for overflowing carts or bags on the ground. We're documenting those, and we are now sending violation notices. And as the board knows, you know, you get a violation, that doesn't come with a civil penalty the first time. After that, civil penalty. So, if it repeats in the next, in the 12 months after it first happens, they do get a civil penalty, and we are tracking when the violations are occurring. And so, we're keeping a running tab of those. And so, I think that the rental management companies are picking up on that. They're being responsive when we, most are being responsive when we call and ask for them to come out and clean up. In some cases, we have cleaned up in a bad situation. We have cleaned up, but we're still sending the notice, just so it doesn't sit out there. And I do thank Chris Tremly and Eddie Williams for coming out and doing this work over the weekend. It's been a tremendous help. And I think that the result of the work they're doing on Saturday and Sunday will not only help the drivers not having to get out, but it'll improve compliance all the way around. So, the other issue is the recycling carts. We're still trying to work through this with Trash Detail and TFC. You may have noticed that some of the blue carts are still out there, and that's because there's some timing issues between when Trash Detail comes through and when TFC comes through. And we're aware of that, and we're working on that, and we hope to get that corrected here soon. So, I would point out that, you know, the cart placement on Saturdays that we're still seeing, and then that issue are probably the two biggest issues that we still have that we need to work on. And certainly, I know you guys have observed things, and this has been a big priority for the board to get this whole situation corrected, so I'm happy to hear any feedback that you have on what we might want to pay attention to.
Good.
I have observed bulk items being left out, and then moved back off the right-of-way to the other side of the bulkhead. So, I assume that's Trash Detail that's doing that at this point, probably, rather than... It's not a driver doing that at this point.
No.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No, I think it's getting better. The one place that I've had the most complaints about is the Keys Party House.
Yes, I know.
The one there just north of the islander. That house seems to be a problem, where there's cars parked everywhere. But it was obnoxiously trash driven with about 25 bags out there. It was awful. Which tells me the occupancy of the house is way too much. It's overoccupied.
Yeah, that's a, we did send them a violation, I believe, over the Father's Day weekend, and they, there was an event there that, and they didn't have an adequate plan to address the trash from the event.
They don't respond well either, do they?
It was, it was difficult for us to get ahold of them that day, but they did get a violation.
Thank you. Commissioner Seehan? I've had good response in a lot of ways. People have noticed the difference, which is good. I would be interested to see what Mr. Fuller has to say, you know? If anybody's checked with him on his walks and...
I haven't, but that would be a good question.
Commissioner Bray?
Thank you for the efforts.
Yeah.
Contrary to what people may say, I've been told that the drivers do get out. And I know it's a safety hazard, but I do appreciate them doing that. I think the beach road looks nice, organulent road, and I appreciate the staff, Chris Tremly and Eddie Williams for their efforts, and also you and your staff trying to get on top of everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
The drivers do very tough, they really do.
They do. We have a good crew in there. Good folks. Bob?
I do agree, it does look better, and it is helping a lot. The people that opted out, do you see them rolling the carts out on Thursday and not having a problem on Monday? Because I know part of this was trying to cut down the tonnage on Monday, so...
Well, you know, they are, they are, when they notice a violation, they're comparing it back to the opt-out list, to see if they're opting out. And they are trying to follow up if there are problems, and they have opted out. Actually, I think that a lot of the issues we've had are not people that have opted out.
Okay, good.
So, it was kind of interesting to see that. Regarding Commissioner Fuller, you know, if he were to walk the beach road at around noon on Monday and Thursday, I would hope he would say it looks a lot better, because I've noticed that it's clean as I've ever seen it.
It's much better.
I mean, you don't, in the middle of the day on the rollback day, it's night and day. You don't see many carts at all. And so, it's really keeping the path clean, and now that we have the street sweeper, we're running the sweeper once a week. And so, the path, the path is getting cleaned once a week as well.
I want to ride on the sweep.
It's kind of tight in there.
Is it tight?
Once you get in and get seated, you're okay, but...
A little tight to get in.
I know, well, one of the things they talked about doing, they thought about having to move some mailboxes to make a clean run, just slight adjustments, and then sort of reclaiming the path. I think they were gonna go and scrape the shoulder, just to sort of reclaim the edges. And I know the edges are probably ground up a little bit in some cases from the grass, but all that's being considered.
Are we not over the side of the path?
They do, they do.
I got a machine for that.
I think one of the, Nancy and Public Services have talked about trying to reclaim the path and reclaim the shoulders.
God, yeah.
Well, we're talking about the path, it's not on the list, but this is one of those good news items. The path on Old Oregon Inlet Road, I know there's been some work down there. Can you talk about that?
Sure. Well, thanks to David Ryan, we were able to capitalize on having Hatchell Concrete out doing the sidewalk work in the Cove and the Nagset Acres. And so, we were able to go down and identify sections of the path in the South Nagset, which is concrete that needed repairs. And so, they were able to identify about $30,000 worth of work, and they've since now completed that, replacing whole panels down there. And they've gotten a lot of the worst situations corrected, so that was good, good timing, and very much appreciated of Hatchell and David for getting that done.
Great job.
And then also, Public Services, David Perry, actually went down there and did a comprehensive inventory of all sections that needed to be addressed.
Good. That's, that's awesome.
It's an example of the water department helping other departments.
Yes. Yep. Very good.
And David's our new water distribution, or water operations superintendent, so...
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Anything, that was it for...
That's it for the sanitation card.
All right. Great. Thank you. And then, Amy is gonna talk to us about a request for Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, Dare County Tourism Bureau, lifeguard funding.
I am. Good morning again.
Good morning.
So, I believe at one of our board workshops, it was, the board had inquired about discussing with the tourism bureau about help with lifeguard salaries due to the fact that we are extending our season and the amount of lifeguards that are out beyond Labor Day through the end of October. And, so I reached out to Diane Bognich, who's their finance director, and she had talked to Lee, who was just here earlier today, and he, they are going to take that idea to their steering committee meeting on August 9th. And so, that is after our August meeting, but I'm sure that Andy will keep you updated, and we can bring it back to a meeting just to let you know the status of that. But, they have asked if Andy or I or Chad would be available to help answer any questions, and of course, I said yes. So, we just wanted to let you all know that we're following up on your request, and they have been willing to initiate that conversation.
Are you working with any other towns to make that a coordinated effort?
I, I haven't asked on behalf of any other town, so I, again, I, Diane hasn't reached out to us directly for any help, but...
No, I mean, it's a town in Nagset actively working with other towns to try to present a coordinated effort, not the Visitors Bureau, but us working, trying to say a united front, which means there's more representatives on the tourism board.
We have not yet, but we can certainly do that.
I would think it behooves all to present a united front.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. And Commissioner Cahoon, you have three items.
Sorry, guys.
No, sorry?
As you all know, we've been reading in the social media and in the papers about the lack of doctors. I've read several comments from people in Nagset, including 95-year-olds that were suddenly left without a doctor because of the Manio office changing or closing. There are doctors that want to come here, not affiliated with the hospital, because they're the ones that closed the office. It was the hospital that closed the office, because they're all owned by the same system, or that system is the one that closed the office. But there are independent doctors that, it might behoove us, again, to be working with Manio, who's actively lobbying for doctors and making a lot of, they've done an awful lot of work in Manio to try to get doctors here with other organizations, and it might help us with our citizens to coordinate with Manio, maybe the manager could coordinate with their manager, maybe even the county. But, there's a, for somebody that's got a hospital, which is really great, we have a marked lack of doctors.
Yes.
And closing one office with just so little notice...
Yes.
Has really thrown a lot of people, sending people to Plymouth, Elizabeth City, Chesapeake, Moayok. And now, if you read in the paper what Mr. Sloan said, you can apply to be a patient back if they get doctors back. You can apply. These were people that were thrown to the wolves with a total lack of medical care in cases that people really need medical care.
Yes.
And a lot of people do not have the ability to travel out of town to go to Plymouth or Chesapeake or Moayok.
Yep.
So, we need to be active on the behalf of our community as well, lobbying to facilitate doctors coming to this area.
I was one of those.
That got the notice.
That got the notice. Melanie and I both were, lost our doctors when they closed the Manio facility, so, yeah, painfully aware. And I agree. I think anything that, again, that's a cooperative effort. It's affecting all the towns.
It is.
You know? And it, it's something, this is another one of those things, we haven't all spoken together with one voice on, and probably would be beneficial. And if you don't mind, I don't disagree with your directive to explore working with Manio, but if, but if the board doesn't mind, I will also, today or tomorrow, reach out to the other mayors and see.
And the chairman as well. Dare County has had a meeting about it.
They have.
Dare County's very concerned about it as well, but...
I watched that online meeting that they held, and the people that spoke during the public comment. There was some disturbing information that was provided by some of the people that...
Yeah. It's scary.
It's really scary to think that we're in this position, and somebody referred to it as corporate medicine, you know, as taking away the hometown where Dr. Holden used to be, where I went as a kid.
Right.
But you've got people that, like you said, there was one reference to a 95-year-old woman that lost her, and there was some concern about when they knew they were gonna close it and didn't tell the people soon enough, you know, till they got the letters.
Well, yeah, the rumors were out there that they were closing, and then all of a sudden, people, 3,000, the letter in the media's been 3,000, or that's an accurate number, but close to, they might get the letters, and it's just thrown lives into turmoil.
And I couldn't agree more with us working with our partners, other municipalities in the county, to address it, because it is a shame, and it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
Good idea.
I, you know, I think one of the biggest issues was, was communication. I mean, I don't like that business decision, but anybody can make a business decision. But to drop people, you know, and not give them opportunities to find other, I mean, people, you need medical care, and to not have the opportunity to find other medical care and be given a reasonable period of time of, you know, six months to a year, because it takes a long time to find other medical care.
And people are in the middle of scheduling tests, and you can't get a test done if a doctor doesn't schedule it for you.
Yep.
I mean, people are just dropped into a void.
Yes.
In many cases, it were, there were serious illnesses that people were having tests for, or lack of tests.
Right.
Because nobody was signing an order.
Yeah, that's right.
Their whole, their whole business model was totally business. They didn't give a darn about the community.
Yeah. Thank you. If there's nothing more on that, then we'll move to the next item, which is stormwater maintenance.
I asked this because of the time of year. Was asked before that little tropical system supposedly, which was a little bit premature...
Yeah.
Was on the agenda, but it was, it was a question more about how are we on our stormwater maintenance, not projects, but how are we making sure our ditches are clean and everything's ready? And also, to put people on notice of, that if we have a big rain event, you can't drain the water in minutes. It may take days, but I just wanted to update on our maintenance.
Well, you know, Dave is here, and Nancy's here, and we've had a discussion about our maintenance plan, you know, recently. And so, we obviously do have a maintenance plan we developed a few years ago, where we broke the town down into three zones, and we actively try to address specific things twice a year. So, that'd be culvert cleaning, ditch cleaning, right-of-way mowing, shoulder scraping in some cases, trimming. We do all of that stuff, and we try to do it at least twice a year. And then we also do a lot of pre-storm maintenance, looking for problems, making sure culverts are cleaned out, that grates are cleaned out and things are gonna flow. We coordinate with DOT to make sure that a lot of their facilities are gonna function like the outfalls. We certainly alert them when there are problems with the outfalls, and they've actively looked at making sure that repairs are done. David coordinates with the state. I believe they do this two times a year, where they come in and do aquatic weed spraying in a lot of our ditches for alligator weed to help eliminate the choke, choking problem that happens in some of our ditches. And then, we do a lot of specific maintenance in various areas that are sort of the major trunk lines of our drainage system, like the oil, the Memorial Avenue ditch. You see today Bobby Hooper's out doing this ditch line along here, which we've essentially had to do from time to time, because DOT has not really been able, able to dedicate any resources to it. I think when we've asked in the past, they told us that they really only have the resources to come once every seven years to deal with some of that. And as we know, that's just not enough, and so, in order to make sure that this system functions, we're gonna have to do some of this stuff. And so, we have been doing that. The village system is pretty complex. You know, you have Seven Sisters, and water that hits the ground in Seven Sisters flows all the way through the system and goes out into the sound at Lakeside. And so, there's a lot of different players that have to do things along that length of that system to make sure the system functions. We've actually done capital projects along the length of this system in recent years to improve how the system flows, and we've taken on some of the DOT work. We do rely on certain HOAs or the golf course to do things as well, and we have reached out to them to try and do their piece of that system. We probably could do more. I think that's something that we've brought up to the board, and the board has responded. So, this coming budget year, we will have a stormwater crew leader and a stormwater technician on staff, so we have two dedicated positions for stormwater. Now, obviously, they operate within facilities maintenance, so they're, they get pulled to do other things at, from time to time. Bobby Hooper's our stormwater crew leader. He does an excellent job. He understands our drainage system, but he's also our best equipment operator, so he does get pulled to do other things as well. So, but with having the additional resources that the board has given us, I think we will be able to do a better job than we ever have in maintaining the system.
So, we're cleaning up to date, ready to go for storm system?
We are.
Storm season?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That was the main thing, as well as...
That's probably too much information, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. I just want other people to be aware of it.
I mean, there are the hotspots, and we know where the hotspots are, and David and Bobby and Nancy pay a lot of attention to that. And I know, prior to this recent storm and then other storms we've had, that they're And I know prior to this recent storm and then other storms we've had, that they're always out looking for things, and making sure the pumps are running, and making sure things are cleaned out, and checking things that we know are going to be checkpoints.
You know, I know, and I'm guessing, sort of, my section of Agshead was probably not the priority this spring, because of, but at previous times, I mean, I, you know, I ride to work up Memorial almost every day, and when they're working that section of town, there's rarely a day that you don't see somebody out there. I mean, they are either grading a swale, cleaning out, replacing a pipe. And, you know, I trust that it's happening elsewhere in the town when I'm not seeing it, but I do know that when I, in the last couple of years since we made this a point of emphasis, you've really been able to see that activity.
Staff's done a great job. I just don't want people to have unrealistic expectations that everything we've done, which has been a huge amount, is going to take care of a rain event that dumps several inches per hour, it can't happen.
It won't.
And there are some people that just don't understand that, and so, please don't have unrealistic expectations.
Yeah.
And we typically have not done stormwater maintenance on private property.
Right.
And so, that's another item to point out. Now, we did acquire recently a tine bucket, which is brand new, we just got it last month, and it essentially looks like a bucket, but it's configured kind of like a rake. And so, Bobby was really excited to get this, and you can get in the ditch and clean out all the vegetation without having to get into the soil and muck up the soil, and so, it makes the whole process a lot more efficient. I think he's planning on putting that to good use, so, got a picture of it if anybody wants to see it.
That's cool, all right, thank you. And finally, crosswalk safety.
We have an awful lot of traffic here this year, and I'm telling you, people do not stop at crosswalks. I'm telling you, do not, you take your life in your hands when you're doing a crosswalk.
Yep.
There are a few people that stop, but crosswalks are not, and I know we talked about a lot of crosswalk improvements last year. We need to keep them on the forefront. We also need to ask the Visitors Bureau as well, on their pages, to talk about safety. We welcome you to the area, but please observe crosswalks and be careful of pedestrians or children on bicycles.
Yes.
But it's just horrible out there to see the number of people, especially as I see them at night, coming up and down the road, trying to use a crosswalk to get across, and cars are just zooming through.
Yeah. You know, I don't know how we get through to, you know, driver, and some of its pedestrian behavior as well.
It is, it's their responsibility.
I don't know how we get through that, I had an experience just this past weekend, crossing the beach road at Abalone. And I see pedestrians who I don't think signaled their intent adequately. I walked right up there to the line, it was very clear I was getting right across the road, and a van that had at least a hundred yards to make a decision about what they were going to do came, just kept blowing right past. And, you know, it's, it's tough, but, you know, I.
I don't know what to do, we need to make it a priority to encourage safety, and I'm not sure what the Bike and Ped Coalition's doing, if they're doing any public service announcements or anything this year at all, I don't know.
We've got, we've got a little bit of information that police have put together on the things they've been doing, and some of it ties in with the town at large, and what we're doing for education. We can cover that if you'd like, or.
Sure.
One of the things that we talked about, you know, and I don't know how this, this happened, but we've, we've got a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit down in Whalebone.
Which is, that's ineffective, it's like a speed zone through there.
Yeah.
And I haven't seen anybody stopped in months in there. It's like a crazy, it's like a speedway, it really is like a raceway through there.
We've got some additional signs that we're going to install that will be permanent down in Whalebone at each end of the district to essentially notify drivers of the speed limit, but also to notify them of the speed they're going, you know, and we can collect data with those, and we have those signs now. We've got those signs for Soundside Road as well, and we're going to be installing those. It kind of goes along with the speed cushions that we're still waiting on, but, you know, the Board had approved those items several months ago. I just brought up the speed limit, because it occurred to me the other day, driving north from Agshead Pier and that whole area, you know, there's so many concentrated crosswalks there, and the beach accesses are so heavily used, and a lot of people park on the west side of the road, and it really is hard as a driver to see everything going on. You've got people walking up on both sides of the road, you don't know what their intent is. Are they going to cross, are they just going to keep going down the path? You know, some of them just walk right out, some of them stop and wait, and then you've got so many crosswalks right there in succession. You know, should we look at asking DOT about the speed limit in that area, too? Going thirty-five miles an hour, it's hard to anticipate all that activity in such a concentrated area, so. Just bring that up as one point.
Well, and the other thing, I hope we won't drop, even though we, Eric with his, Eric Clausen with his traffic design experience was helpful in that regard, but I hope we're not going to drop reconfiguring that Whalebone intersection. We still need to, we still need to find a better, cleaner solution to the way that that traffic comes together down there, which will help a little, it won't, it's not going to solve the speed problem, obviously.
See, when we met with DOT in the spring, and we gave the Board an update on that, and, you know, basically what they said was, if we were able to do a design, and Eric had come up with this concept, and if we were able to do a design, then they thought they might be able to do that in conjunction with some of the paving work that's going to be happening. Now, the paving work is getting pushed out, and so, we can start working on the design of that in this next off-season in hopes that we can do something for next year. But DOT, you know, the timing of what they're willing to do and when, that's still in question. You know, I did get an update on the paving work, and the schedule that you heard a couple of months ago is now being pushed out even further. And so, that's, you know, it's something that we're probably going to have to try and take up.
The other thing we need to do is mark our multi-use path. A lot of the places where it was marked correctly, the lines have just gone away through time. So, we need to, you know, do a little bit better job of maintaining our section of multi-use path striping.
Okay.
To your point, I think the crosswalks are a lot of learned behavior, and it's kind of a new thing down here in the past, you know, four or five years for how well they've been marked and people stopping. And I see it other beach towns where they've been doing it longer periods of time, that the drivers are more adjusted to stopping, and so, hopefully with education and marking them like they are, that repeat tourists will learn, it's a learned behavior, so hopefully it gets better.
And the one where he did put up the lights is functioning very nicely. Some of the ones where the signs are just too far away from the crosswalk, they don't function very well at all.
Yeah, Andy mentioned the signs that indicate your actual speed, and not just the, you know, the one I encountered is, because I go to Okeechob so often, is entering Village. Now, that's a different context entirely, because there's one point of entry.
Yeah.
But that sign, when it's at its twenty miles an hour all the way through there, when that sign flashes twenty miles an hour, everybody slows down. I mean, just, and it's, and it's a persistent, you know, showing you your speed, thirty-five, too fast, slow down. That seems to be effective in that one context, and I don't observe that much speeding, but it's also chaos. I mean, it would be hard to speed, I mean, you could, but, but there is so much visually going on there with the golf carts and everything else, and cars pulling in and out, it's, it's, it really kind of, and that's one of the things. It does reduce speed, is having so much stuff to deal with visually.
But where was that again?
This is entering Okeechob. It seems to work in that context, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate that. Do you want to hear from the chief?
Absolutely.
Yeah, chief. Excuse me for a second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Board.
I might just start, actually, at the end of some of my comments, but, you know, we talk about education and ways to affect people's perceptions with crosswalks, and then doing some reading. I've never actually done this in my career, but doing a compliance sting, utilizing an officer or citizen to basically do stings at crosswalks, using a person to walk in the crosswalk or at the crosswalk, and then do enforcement through warnings or citations to those who disobey or disregard the pedestrian. And on the front end of this, we would, we would send this out, let the media be fully aware and very transparent with what we're going to do at one intersection and what day and time to really get some, I think, get some education out there for people. I know it was done a few years ago in KDH, under the Bike Ped Coalition. Agshead's never done it, but I know of, but I think it's something well worth looking at. Anything we can do to sort of get some good bang out there and good publicity over. But just to back up a little bit, you know, the Police Department, we're keenly aware of highway safety issues, including crosswalks, pedestrians, and cyclists. Of course, we get our authority from General Statute twenty-one seventy-three, pedestrians right-of-way at crosswalks. And I bring that up just to bring out Section A, because this is where some of the nuance gets in there. Where traffic control signals are not in place or in operation, the driver of a vehicle shall yield the right-of-way to a pedestrian crossing the roadway within any marked crosswalk or within any unmarked crosswalk at or near an intersection, near an intersection. And so, that's sort of a guideline, guys, what they use, if that one foot touches the pavement, that's when they need to stop. But overall, the Department, we continue to participate in educational pieces through the OBX Bike Ped Coalition. We offer our insight and advice, we share educational information, and we help them develop safety campaigns. And you're right, it's kind of going dormant a little bit. We participate in, we just had an officer, I don't know if y'all saw it, we just got it released from Outer Banks Hospital. I had an officer, Christian Nigiri, participated in a pedestrian safety podcast by the Outer Banks Hospital. Interestingly enough, I think the main topic that came out of that was center turn lane violations. That seemed to grab more attention than anything else he talked about. We continue to participate in the Governor's Highway Safety Program, the Safe Routes to School, Bike and Walk to School program, and we also participate in the town's Internal Transportation Committee. And the manager's already spoken to some of that, but a lot of that focuses on crosswalk upgrades, lighting shark's teeth, which we now have the one set of shark's teeth here at Town Hall Crossing. There's another set to go in at Bainbridge, that'll be the second set, because these do show, you know, nationally increased compliance with crosswalk safety. We've advocated for increased no parking signage in high-density areas. Made suggestions, as the manager spoke about, to NC DOT to re-engineer Whalebone Intersection. Suggested some permanent speed radar signage at these key locations, the use of other traffic calming measures, implemented the use of traffic studies, and advocated for lowering speeds in the West Side neighborhoods. And we also, we share crosswalk and pedestrian safety information on our department's social media page, and I know Roberta a lot of time also posts it on the town's page. And since May, we've had ten pedestrian cyclist-related posts since March, excuse me. So, our officers, enforcement-wise, our officers are directed to address crosswalk and pedestrian concerns along with other highway safety tasks. The following are some, just some numbers of interactions officers have had while on the beach road, and this is from January through May. Multi-use path patrols, specifically, we've had over two-hundred-and-fifty-one. Citations and warnings issued on NC twelve and twelve forty-three, January to May, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight citations, six-hundred-and-twenty-seven warnings, and these include speeding, failure to yield, disobeying signs and signals, and other moving violations. Crosswalk-specific citations and warnings, we've had two warnings and two citations issued since the beginning of the year. We've had one collision involving a crosswalk, and that was a cyclist at Gold Street. And that investigation bore out that the cyclist was at fault in that collision. In addition, and I bring this up because I think anytime we're writing citations or warnings, you know, doing proactive work in an area, that just kind of illustrates the amount of attention we're giving an area. But along with that, we've had, we've issued over ninety-five parking tickets on the beach road and accesses and multi-use paths. The Department utilizes the message board, or, excuse me, utilized the message board on the Causeway and the speed trailer in Whalebone to capture some speed data. The Whalebone speed trailer recorded the following between May twenty-ninth and June fifteenth. A total of one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-three vehicles were clocked going through the intersection. The eighty-fifth percentile of speed during that time was twenty-seven-point-three-one miles per hour. And just, because I mentioned that the message board on the Causeway, it was out there from May twenty-seventh through June thirtieth. Total passes, vehicle passes was seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five, and the eighty-fifth percentile for speed there was fifty-point-five-two. And although those are pretty good percentages of speed, that doesn't diminish our focus on enforcing in those areas. We want to keep those speeds at that eighty-fifth percentile. And as I said just a few minutes ago, future evaluation education, I think doing this sting, this crosswalk sting, would be of some value. Somebody have any questions for me?
Would you send the crosswalk data to us, please?
I'm sorry?
Would you send the cross, I mean, the speed trailer data to us, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Both of them?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we can compare?
And I've got more than that, if you wish, I can actually send all the ones we've been doing in the West Side neighborhoods as well, if y'all would like that information.
For comparison, yes, but highest speeds, lowest speeds?
Sure.
Not just the average speeds?
Yep. Commissioner Seavers.
Issues with any electric bikes?
Just the two, we had two that were stolen, which I think that's going to be an issue we're going to see. But any specific complaints, I'm not aware of any recently, are you, Deputy Chief?
No, there's excess speed on the bike path or nothing. And what's your highest speeds in both Whalebone and the Causeway?
The highest speed in Whalebone was eighty-four miles per hour. The lowest was seven, and then on the Causeway, the highest speed was a hundred-and-thirteen, and the lowest was seven. And is that?
Were they the same day? They weren't the same day, because you were.
I can find out the date, the actual date that those occurred on, because that's captured in that data.
Or time.
But that could be anywhere from Joe Citizen to your emergency vehicle, we just don't know who would have, who had been driving that fast. Unfortunately, even cameras on, safety officers driving a hundred-and-so much miles an hour at Whalebone.
Or eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four at Whalebone. That was somebody cutting up.
Can you give me the definition of a multi-use path patrol?
When that was created, a specific patrol was just basically as officers are on the beach road, doing their patrols to take note of the multi-use path for obstructions. Could be anywhere from obstructions of vehicles to trash to speeding e-bikes. That's essentially it, and then we'll basically document that patrol specifically.
Anytime they ride down the beach road?
It's not anytime, you know, because I don't think they can manage it anytime, but they're asked to, you know, periodically to make that a focus, the primary focus is to look at that multi-use path to make sure that there's no obstructions or any issues with it.
And if they're not doing a multi-use path patrol, and they, they're not doing that, they're just riding down the beach road, and there's an issue on the multi-use path, are they going to address it?
I would certainly hope so.
So, really, it's anytime they drive down the beach road?
It really is, because this doesn't, obviously, this two-hundred-and-fifty-one doesn't capture the amount of time they spend on the beach road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. That brings us to the Mayor's agenda, which I don't have anything to add, I really talked about that up at the committee discussion. So, that brings us to other. So that brings us to other business the board members may have. Is there anything else to come before us today?
I just got one, two things, of course.
Yes, sir.
We had the town's 4th of July fireworks on Monday, heard a lot of positive comments, so I appreciate the town organizing that. It's always a busy time for police, fire, and Public Works. Public Works does a lot of work in the staging and helping get ready for the fireworks. And then police and fire are standing by, police directing traffic fire, you know, there on scene as well, so thank you to the staff that participated in that to make it such a great show. Earlier in this meeting, we had a presentation from Mr. Nettles and Mr. Cafferty concerning the proposed event center. It was not a site plan review, it was just a concept they had. During that meeting presentation, Mr. Nettles talked about going to the website, eventcenter@outerbanks.org. There's a event center page on there where you can read about the project. There's also an email address that you can send your comments to or questions to, so I would encourage those that are watching now or maybe later when it's recorded to have your voices heard. Feel free to go in and review the information that's provided.
Thank you. And I've made a mistake, after we did the Board of Commissioners' agenda, we went through Commissioner Cahoon's items, but I didn't ask the rest of the board if you had items, so I trust that that was yours.
That was mine.
In effect, so I will do that. So Commissioner Sanders, any commissioners' items or additional business?
Nothing for today, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Seiers?
No, nothing for today.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Then, Mr. Whitey, that'll bring us back to your need for a closed session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So I asked that the council make a motion to enter closed session as allowed by General Statute 143-318.11A3 in order to consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, including to discuss the litigation involving Satterfield Landing and Ridley Beach.
All right, then a motion to that effect would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. Thank you. All right, the board has returned to open session. Mr. Whitey, will you report on the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Board of Commissioners did discuss various matters with the town attorney that are protected by the attorney-client privilege, but no actions were taken.
All right, thank you. Regarding other business before we adjourn, we want to circle back to some questions that the board had earlier, and David, if you would mind coming up. This was about, sorry, remind me what this was about.
Debris.
The debris, the debris contract, I'm sorry, yes. So we had a number of questions about having checked references and other contract questions, if you can.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to listen to all the questions, but I'll go ahead and try to summarize first before I answer specific questions, if that will help. We've, we go through this process about once every three years, and we do outreach for debris removal contractors and debris monitoring contractors. And we do it with that frequency based upon the regulations. The regulations are always evolving and changing, so we have to adapt on the fly. Typically, when we engage in these agreements, we'll do it for a single-year period with the option to go ahead and renew up to three years. Right now, for debris removal services, we are under an agreement with Santee Mobile Homes out of South Carolina. But with this being the third year of that agreement, we thought it was best to go ahead and put out a request for proposals. We did so earlier this May. We went ahead and we posted on our website, on the state website, as well as the historically underutilized business website, to go ahead and advertise this request for services for debris removal. One of our limitations is geographical preferences. The code of federal regulations, they have some language which limits our ability to go ahead and have specific geographical preferences for local contractors. I know in the past that we had secured the services of local contractors for debris removal services. We don't exclude them, we notify them whenever we do advertise these services, but of recent, we have not received any proposals from local contractors whenever we advertise for debris removal. So with that being our limitation, yes, it is a little bit different from the way that things have operated in the past. I guess the biggest concern is whenever we do have a large catastrophic event, what happens if we have a national contractor and they're not able to get here? Within the language of the RFP, we have a 48-hour period from the time the notice to proceed is issued for them to be able to mobilize here, but in the need, or, excuse me, in the case of a catastrophic event, they may have limited access to the island. So the way that we would manage that situation is that we could do an emergency procurement where we could perform some outreach and we could include local contractors in that in order to take care of that first phase of debris removal, which is the push-and-shove period. And that's usually the first 70 hours following a storm event, where basically the primary focus is to remove debris from the roadways, to go ahead and remove any tree limbs or debris and push that off to the side until the Phase Two operations take place, and that would be the debris removal from the right-of-way. So I hope that is helpful in understanding, you know, our process. For this specific request for proposals, we received three, and they were basically all from national firms, from Craver Gulf, from DCR, and from TFR. And TFR is based out of Leander, Texas, and included in their proposal is previous work conducted in North Carolina. There was some work that had been done post-Florence, I think there was a dozen North Carolina communities that were served, as well as, again, for Dorian. They had served New Hanover County, Brunswick, Craven, Onslow, Pender, Duplin, so they do have some experience here in North Carolina. And they have worked for the North Carolina Department of Transportation for those types of services. They had provided references, there was nine references that were provided along with some letters, but in addition to that, we usually perform some outreach. I have reached out, but I haven't gotten responses as of yet to confirm, but I do have written documentation that was included as part of the proposal for references from nine different communities, plus some written letters in support of those references. So I hope that provides some background, but I'll be glad to answer any specific questions you may have.
Were any or some number of those written references from any of those North Carolina communities that have been served?
Let me confirm real quick. There was, there was one reference that was given for North Carolina Department of Transportation, and that was one of the communities that, or one of the contacts that I reached out to that I haven't gotten a response yet, but it was not accompanied by a written letter. Okay.
Thank you.
David, thank you very much for the information, appreciate that. You may mention the emergency act before, say, they couldn't get here in the 48 hours or whatever. Are we not allowed to have a contract for the first 48 hours with anybody?
So we would be under agreement with TFR in this case, this is what the request is. 48 hours is the time period that we are, we have given them to go ahead and mobilize, not to say that they couldn't mobilize sooner.
No, I guess my question is, can we, are we allowed to have a separate contract for the first 48 hours before theirs comes into, before they have to be here?
Yeah, so a lot of this is really based upon price, and this is where I think the geographical preference came into play. And we saw this on some of our own, you know, probably going back about 10 years, is with the local contractors, they can provide a good price on certain items, but not on all of the items, just because they don't have the equipment or the capacity to do so. And so as part of this evaluation process, we look at price, we look at qualifications, we look at resources, but it's more weighted towards that price aspect, because essentially that's what FEMA is looking at when we get into that reimbursement phase. So it's, to answer your question, it's, we can do it on an emergency basis, but if we have a prepositioned contract, can we have another one? I think there may be a conflict, and I don't know if the town attorney has anything that he wants to add to that, but it's my understanding that really it's a single contract that we could manage unless it's done based upon an emergency procurement.
It makes me think, though, the, our needs within the first 48 hours, I mean, this is for debris removal, correct?
Correct.
And so what would our needs be in 48 hours? Would it necessarily be debris removal, or would it be for other things? And so if we're talking about other things, maybe we could explore what the specific needs are and come up with some other program to address that. Whether it's equipment, it's probably going to be heavy equipment that's where we're going to need access to, like push-and-shove and some other things, and so maybe we look at it from that lens.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and really, I guess my question would really be for FEMA. And I think it's the issue of having somebody on-call predetermined for the first 48 hours with a scope of service that is essentially pushing stuff off the road.
Yeah, it's not debris removal, it's clearing so you can get emergency services, fire, police into areas, clean the roads so people can get in and out.
Right.
It's not necessarily debris.
Not pretty work, it's just getting it out of the way.
Moving it.
So, okay, so this is broken into two different categories, the Phase One, which is actually the first 70 hours, okay, so the first 70 hours would be that push-and-shove period, and then the Phase Two would be the actual removal of that debris and then hauling off. So based upon my prior conversations with North Carolina Emergency Management personnel, they were frowning on us trying to separate that out and trying to do that under separate But I can go back and I can ask the question again, if that would be permissible, and again, just try to give them scenarios based upon our geographic location and those what-ifs of what could possibly happen with limited access on a large-scale event.
If you've got a fire, your fire truck can't get there, but you've got to wait 72 hours for somebody to remove debris, that's just...
What happened in Isidore? Who moved it?
We had local contracts.
Plus?
Plus.
Us?
Yeah.
And the state?
Us, we had us, local, state, you know, bigger companies come in.
Yes.
Everybody had multiple stuff come in to do work.
Right.
Because the big boys aren't coming at first 48, 72 hours.
Right, and there are other resources other than this. We do have Derrick County, which we have in our local agreement with their debris removal contract.
They're going to be in the same boat we are.
They are, and I was going to also mention, the state also has a prepositioned statewide contract as well, so those are additional resources, but may not be helpful in that first 48 to 70-hour period.
David, what's the current contract state?
As far as the agreement for when they are to be positioned, it's 48 hours is the standard timeframe that we give.
Well, I guess I would just ask you to go back. I mean, you hear the concern, it would be, you know, and I wonder, like, you know, in a big storm, we're going to have a lot of, we're going to have sand on the road, just like you do South Oregon Inlet, probably, but that's going to be on a state road, it's going to be mostly on Old Oregon Inlet Road and NC 12. I assume DOT is going to respond to that, or their contractor would respond to that.
We do have a separate agreement, too, that gives us the ability with our own forces to be able to remove debris from South Old Oregon Inlet Road as well as South Virginia Dare Trail. But yes, typically DOT would be responsible for that.
Are they DOT's contractor? The website states in 2018, they were DOT's contractor.
Yeah, they worked with, they partnered with them, it says.
Right, they had an agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation down south, I think in the Wilmington area.
Mm-hmm, 2018. It's not hard to ask, especially considering a unique location and the obstacles that people are going to face in getting here.
Getting here, yes, I understand. I also understand, you know, you can't, you can't do this kind of contract with zero hours of response to you, if you've got, so there is going to be a gap, and somehow, you know, I think our discomfort is with the gap in a large event. So if that could be carried back to emergency management and just say, is there a framework in which the board could consider a second contract to fill that gap?
Okay, I'll ask that, and then if, and I'll report back out to the board. Also, I can ask the contractor as well, with the mobilization of equipment, if they could do that in advance of a storm event, so that would maybe help address some of that concern with access.
That would be, yes, that would help.
That would help, they'd probably look at the percentages and...
Go with the percentage, but they...
Go with the percentage, yeah.
But they also have a lot of subcontractors?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Based on their website?
Yeah.
So they probably have local or regional contractors?
Yeah, they are. And when they have a gap, they're filling that locally, you know, if they get here and somebody else can't get here, they're filling that gap locally.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So as far as the debris removal contract, you know, we're not going to move that forward to fill the gap, so they do have North Carolina experience, which is one of the big questions, so I guess it's, is the board comfortable with the written referrals that were received to act, or do you want those to be checked in some way before we take action on the contract?
I'll do that anyways. I'll go ahead and get some verbal communication and check at least three of the references.
Okay. Do we want to wait to get that?
Yeah, I mean, do y'all mind coming in mid-month to do it? Okay. Then if you'll do that, then we'll put this on a mid-month agenda.
Okay.
And get us copies of the contract, because some members have asked for that. And then we'll just do that mid-month, and if there's anything else we can do mid-month, we'll do that, otherwise that would be a really short meeting.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Board, appreciate that. Is there anything else to come before the board today? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Actually, I think you need a motion to recess.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. Motion to recess to, what is the date? Two weeks from today?
July 20th.
July 20th. Yes, to 9:00 AM on July 20th.
Motion for recess until July 20th.
About a second?
Second.
A second? All those in favor signify... All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The board is in recess.